Good morning. Good morning. Today is February 5th, Tuesday, February 5th. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is always invited, the public is welcome. With that said, Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alacant Buscano, Englander, Garcia, Weezer, Corretes, LeBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zion, Weston, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Englander moves, Buscano seconds, next.
Communitary resolutions for approval.
Parks moves, Corretes seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if I could ask everyone to rise for our flag salute, which today will be led by Richard Alacant.
Place our hands over our heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Alacant. Okay, at this time, Madam Clerk, why don't we go through today's agenda? The first items, please.
Items 1 through 3 are liens, or items noticed for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items, item 2, B, E, F, I, L, N, and O may be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid.
Okay, without objection.
Also, there's a request to continue items 2K until March 19th.
Without objection.
And items 2P and Q until March 5th.
Okay, without objection. Okay, any cards?
Cards on items 2 and 3.
Okay, well, why don't we hold those items and we vote on 1? Oh, we want to continue, I've been handed a note, we want to continue item 1 to March 6. So without objection, that'll be the order. What's the next section on the agenda?
Items 4 through 31 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials, members, members specials, Mr. Weezer.
Item 5, please.
Item 5 for Mr. Weezer, 6 for Mr. Englander. Members, other specials, Mr. Parks?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment on 25 and ask for a report back 90 days after the 2013 general election on the two motions that are discussed in that report.
Okay, can we just take that as a friendly amendment and still vote on it, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Perry's asking for it special too.
Okay, so we'll just hold that special. So let's vote on the remaining, Mr. Englander?
Sorry, yes, items 22, 24, and 26, if we could hold those, please.
Okay, we'll hold those items for Mr. Englander. Madam Clerk?
28, please, Mr. President.
Mr. LeBange, 28.
Mr. President, there's a request to continue item 4 to July 5th.
Without objection. Now can we, Mr. Weezer?
Number 12, please.
Mr. 12 for Mr. Weezer. Okay, Madam Clerk, now we're gonna vote before anything else is held special. So let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Parks?
Fourth with on 27.
Fourth with on item 27. Next.
Items 32 through 40 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, do we have cards?
Cards on items 32, 33, 37, 38, and 40.
Okay, then we'll hold those for cards. Members, Mr. Weezer?
39, please.
39 for Mr. Weezer. Okay, let's vote on the remaining items, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes. And the ordinances, Mr. President, let's reconsider, the ordinances will be held over for one week.
I understand. Mr. Corretts? Did you want to hold item 30?
Oh. Yes, sir, I did, thank you.
Okay, so now, we have to reconsider item 30, so members, we're gonna vote on reconsideration. If we could open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
Okay, now we'll hold that item special at the request of Councilmember Corretts. Where does that bring us on the agenda?
Item 41 is a closed session item, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
I wish to defer to the Chair of Budget and Finance, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a matter that actually was not heard by Budget and Finance, I would like it to be heard in closed session.
Okay. So we'll hold that item as well, and that brings us now, oh, that brings us now to what?
On the supplemental agenda, item 42 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held, 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection, that item is now before us. Any cards?
No cards.
Members specials? Or special? Okay, let's vote on that, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where, Madam Clerk?
To presentations or items called special.
Okay, I think we'll begin with the presentation. Mr. LeBange? Could you come take the President's chair, please?
Good morning, I'd like to call on Mr. Herb Weston, President of the City Council, for a very special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Today is the beginning, yeah, I was trying to stall for the cameraman, sometimes I don't get enough camera time, but this time it wasn't about me, it's about the people that stand behind me. For the past seven years, we've had a display on the bridge connecting City Hall and City Hall East. We're very proud of the various pieces of history that we bring to this council and to all of the individuals that travel throughout City Hall and have an opportunity to see this thing. We have partnered with several people, several organizations, to make this a reality, and I want to give special thanks to the Los Angeles Association of Black Professionals, the Professionals Managers Association, we have Charlie Memm's with us today, and a special thanks to Councilman Joe Buscano, who helped us fund this. I also have to acknowledge the Mayor's Office, our General Services Department, the Cultural Affairs Department, and the City Department of Print and Publishing Services. This would have been impossible without their assistance. Earlier, I want to say it was at the Limerick Park Book Festival, and I didn't go to this event, my wife attended, and there she saw our friends Bernard and Shirley Kinsey, and they gave my wife a signed copy of a book that they had written. It, it, um, it's a wonderful book, and once you begin to read it, you cannot put it down. It has art where they've collected over the years, it has documents from slavery, it has photos, you name it. So I called Bernard and I said, you know what, I don't know if we can take what you have in the book and put it in a collection that we could display in City Hall, but if we could do that, I would love to do that, I would love to show this phenomenal collection to the residents and the visitors of the great city of LA. Without pause, he said that it could be done, dispatched his son Khalil to work with us, along with Albert Lord of my office, who does an excellent job. Let's give Albert Lord a round of applause. This display has been on tour since 2007, over 3 million people have seen it, it's one that I'm extremely excited about, so take a moment, go to the bridge and read the history. Now, it's not sugarcoated, there are some horrific things there, some tragic things, and things that might make some angry a little bit, but it shows the progression of African-Americans in this country, and, and it's important to know where, in order to know where you're going, you have to know where you've been, and for so long, you'd have to struggle to try to find information where it relates to the history of African-Americans, and this makes it easier. Now, it's impossible for us to document 400 years, but what I'm hoping is this will spur curiosity and that other individuals will go out and by their own means try to find out not only who they are, but what African-Americans have done in this great country. It's great because all of us work together, it's great because this is a melting pot, it's great because we dare, as a people, to be great. With that said, to say a few words, I would like to have the individual that was our biggest donor where it relates to this year's exhibit, if you could please give a round of applause to Bernard Shirley Kinsey, please, give him a round of applause.
Councilman Herb Weston, thank you so much. Brother Rosenthal, it is so good to see you, I tell you, this is one of the great days to see you up and about, he's been a long, long friend, so we, I'm just really touched to see you doing, doing well.
Getting stronger and stronger.
That's what we want, that's exactly what we want. First of all, to the council, thank you so much for having us, Albert Lord, who has done a wonderful job with our son Khalil. The Kinsey Collection, as the Council President said, has been traveling for seven years, and I'm here to announce today that March 8th, it will open at Epcot at Walt Disney World Resort for three years, where over 20 million people will see it. And the Council President said that there are some things that are disturbing, but Disney has decided that it is time to tell the story, and I think it's time for America to hear the story, because there's so much of the story is his story, not history. So let me just give you a couple seconds on this. This city, called Los Angeles, was founded with 26 Negroes or Africans that spoke Spanish, this city right here. The second governor of Mexico was De Jesus Pico, he's a brother, you follow me? Guiero Vicente, a brother, that abolished slavery in 1828. So I want you all to understand that we have dibs in this city, big time, and not just dibs as it relates to population, but in terms of our roots, because 26 of our brothers and sisters founded this city. They spoke Spanish, as most people spoke in that day, but they were from Africa and they were of Negroid features. So we wanted to just make that marker. Now, we would love for you to go on the bridge, because the Kinsey Collection speaks to what Council President Weston said. It talks about accomplishments and achievements, because what we decided to do as a family, Shirley, Khalil and I, was to talk about what we did to overcome the struggle as opposed to being in the struggle. Too much of conversation is about struggling, we don't believe in struggling, we believe in accomplishment and overcoming. And if you start with 1600, with Leo Africanos, you'll go all the way through civil rights, and you'll get a snapshot of this wonderful, wonderful race called African-Americans, and my wife Shirley says, not just in February, that we should honor the achievements of African-Americans in building this country. In 1860, there were 4 million black people working on 75,000 plantations, worth $3 billion, worth more than any other commodity in the world, were black folks in this country. And so what we're saying was, that not only do we have dibs here, we built this country from the plantation to the textile, to the credit, everything that you know, and what we want to do is what our Jewish brothers and sisters have done so eloquently. We want to say that we were there, we mattered, and that we want to make sure that we are at the table with our narrative as this story continues to get told. President Weston, thank you so much for having Shirley and I, our son Khalil Kinsey is in San Francisco, we're opening another exhibition in San Francisco on Friday of this week. Thank you so much.
You got a special guest waiting over your left shoulder. Bernard, Bernard, introduce your special guest.
Oh, yes, and I'm sorry, first of all, our niece, who is visiting us from New York, Cassandra Freeman, on my sister's side, she's an actress, actor, she was the love interest in Denzel Washington, with Denzel Washington, Inside Man, and Chris Rock, she's got a great career, and this is my, the best part of my day, next week we will be celebrating 46 years of marriage, my wife Shirley, Pula Kinsey from St. Augustine. Okay, all right.
And Shirley doesn't even look 46 years old, okay? I want the members to know that as a gift, Bernard and Shirley are giving each and every one of you a copy of their book, which is being distributed to each and every one of you now, and I believe you all received a autographed copy.
Yes.
With that said...
Mr. President? Mr. Weston, just for a moment, Mr. Rosenthal and some other members have some comments, could I hold before you make the great presentation? Mr. Rosenthal?
All right, first of all, they're treasures of us in the 11th District, Shirley and Bernard, we go way back many, many years, they used to be on my show a lot at the same time, but when we start this Black Heritage Month this year, it is truly one of the most exciting years for many reasons. We have a president, come on, facts speak for themselves, we have successful business people who decided to go into art and collect and maintain this rich culture and history. I've been to their exhibits all over the place, and the fact that we have them on the bridge, Mr. President, that again shows your leadership, and singling them out and making them be appreciated by the rest of the city. Yes, they are the Palisadean treasures, we love them very much, and I just want to give you a special hello like that, and thank you very much for your leadership throughout our great city, and I might say throughout the nation, and you've traveled all over the world with this, and let the whole world understand African-American Heritage Month as it is. Bless you, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, Ms. Perry, or Bill?
You said we have a president, but you didn't identify which one, was it me or Obama? People get confused.
First African-American's President's Council, and I love that issue.
That was a joke, Bill.
I know.
Ms. Perry?
Bernard and Shirley, I've known you for very many years, and it's been wonderful to watch the trajectory of your lives and to see that you found your life's work, and taking your collection not only around the country but around the world, and touching people's lives. I had the pleasure of seeing your multi-faceted multimedia presentation at the Nate Holden Theater for Performing Arts, and it was an incredible night of art and history and culture, but more than that, it was an expression of who the two of you are as people and as a family, and I just want to say thank you for sharing... And I just want to say thank you for sharing that part of your lives with all of us.
Thank you very much. My personal regards, and that all of us should walk over the Henry P. Rio Bridge and see that, and also go to the Pueblo, where there's a wonderful plaque that Mayor Bradley dedicated of the original 44, the 26 African dissents. Anyway, Mr. President, proceed.
Thank you. I'd like to present to you guys now, we'll do it this way. Thank you for all of your service to not just Los Angeles, but this great nation in which we live. Let's give them a round of applause.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Weston. Let's give this very special family a big hand right now again for their work, and make sure you enjoy the exhibit. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'd like to take 32 and 33. 32 and 33.
Items 32 and 33, call special for cards.
Great, I'm gonna call cards now. John Walsh, Dollhouse Dude, Erica Decker, Lisa Sarkin. Mr. Weston, thank you, Mr. Weston. Thank you. Mr. Kocorian.
Mr. President, I just asked that item 12 be continued for one week, please.
So ordered, 12 continued one week. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org and telling Governor Rick Perry to go to hell concerning his attacks on Los Angeles and California. What we have here is a massive development agreement between the city of Los Angeles and Universal Studios. If you live in the Valley, what this will do to your traffic, it will turn it into even more of a hell than it is now. This is a studio office, studio-related uses, entertainment facilities, hotel parking facilities, open space-related amenities, and any community facilities established with the construction. This is gonna, this would have gone through if we didn't stop it. Their answer to everything is develop, develop, develop. And I'd like to say, as far as Mr. Rick Perry is concerned, after what Mitt Romney did to him in the primaries, he should be rubbing his butt and getting AIDS tested.
Mr. Dude.
Yes, I will only speak one minute, so I can speak on more items. I already lost half a minute telling you that I'm only gonna speak one minute and counting down. But I don't care. See, Universal Studios, it's all about entertainment, you idiots. We need basic housing. We don't need more entertainment. We need housing for people. And we need to do it in a permanent way, so nobody loses their house to City Hall. Look at all those liens that you have on properties. It is not your right. It is not your right to take housing away from people. Oh, he's not speaking about the item. The item is entertainment over people, and that is totally stupid.
Erica Decker, is that correct? Thank you.
Should I come up?
Then follow Lisa Sarkin.
Yes, I have been on the, on this hill, Craig Drive, for the last almost 40 years now. It's changed drastically. My question here, it deals with not only the Sherman Oaks property, God knows where Sherman Oaks property has to do with the Universal Hill, I'm not sure, never did understand. You talk about annexation and detachment, going from the city of Los Angeles to the county, which disturbs me, because then one questions what the boundaries are, the intrusion lines through buildings and specific uses. We've not seen any visual exactly as to where any of this really is. What does this mean to me as a homeowner who has been there all this time? I'm really very concerned. You have hotels, which you've been talking about for the last 20 years, five hotels on a property that's in the middle of a city. It's the only green pasture left. There is nothing else there. Barham Boulevard, it takes over an hour to go up. Literally, where are you going to do? How are you going to? There's not enough water already for the hillside. There's not enough anything for the hillside. I mean, greed has gone beyond at this point, just beyond. So one really needs to address, we would like to see the visual exactly, not just hear of all the employment, quote, "employment" that is going to be utilized. I mean, I could go on forever, it's endless.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments.
It's both 32 and 33?
You have two cards, you're gonna speak at both.
Okay. Lisa Sarkin, Studio City Neighborhood Council, Vice President and Chair of the Land use Committee. So many times I am here opposing a development, I'm so happy to be here supporting one. Our Neighborhood Council has, supports the Evolution Plan with the agreed-upon conditions you have in a letter that all of you should have in front of you. Once NBC Universal's executives realized the impacts the Evolution Plan would cause in Studio City, negotiations and adjustments to the plan were made. Without having any residential, we find that the traffic issues can be minimal and the impacts were reduced to almost nothing, which is very, very important. We commend NBC Universal for its commitment to being a good neighbor, a job creator, and for helping to retain the quality of life in Studio City. And I'll go on to 33.
Thank you very much.
I have a statement to read from our president.
We're gonna do 32, and then we'll call you.
Oh, you'll call me back? Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. One more card. Corinne Verteri.
Good morning. My name is Corinne Verteri, and I'm the Chief Real Estate Development Officer for NBC Universal. On behalf of NBC Universal, I would like to thank President Weston and the entire council for allowing us to be back here today to discuss the Evolution Plan. It is important to note that we simply would not be here today without Councilman LeBange and his staff's leadership and support, the hard work and guidance we have received from city staff and the Planning Commission and the representatives of Plum, in particular, Councilman Reyes. We cannot thank you enough for all of your dedication to this project and your dedication to this great city of Los Angeles. We are back here today to discuss the development agreement and the sign district for the NBC Universal Evolution Plan. These are critical remaining components of the entitlements we are seeking for the Evolution Plan as we prepare to make a substantial investment in enhancing the production and tourism uses on the Universal property. The Evolution Plan will provide a number of significant community benefits, including the investment of more than $100 million in transportation improvements, $3.5 million in funding for the Los Angeles River Bike Path, including development of a one-acre trailhead park, a project labor agreement for construction, and over $1 million in funding for local community organizations, community design, and neighborhood beautification and improvements. Signage plays a critical role in our future, creating a sense of arrival for our guests and an identity for our studio and keeping us competitive with the other entertainment destinations in Southern California. Working with the community and Councilman LeBange's office, we have created a signage program that is not only responsive to the community, including no digital signage in the city in the future, but appropriate for our nearly 400-acre property that serves as one of the largest working studios in the world and a top Los Angeles tourist destination.
Thank you, and complete your comment right there. Thank you.
We ask for your approval of the development agreement and the sign district today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Corinne. Thank you so much. I do want to just take a moment there on this item here. We're gonna go to 33 in a moment. Before we do, we have some great young people from the Hancock Park Elementary School. Please stand and be recognized right there. Thank you, Hancock Park, over 75 years old, located right on Fairfax Avenue next to Park La Brea. Thank you, Hancock Park. Good job. Madam Clerk, I want to go to item 33. I do have cards on item 33. So I want to go to 33 before we vote on this. All right, 33, we have Mr. Walsh again, Mr. Dude again, Lisa Sarkin, as well as two
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. We have a new post up this morning, or go to the front page online. What's happening here is signage. Signage pays for everything, okay? The amount of money they make out of signage is immense. And why do people pay for the signs? Because there's auto traffic. In other words, the first they get up and say, "We're gonna get rid of auto traffic." And then with the sign district, if they got rid of auto traffic, the rental of the signs would go down. They're lying. Listen to them. $1 million to community groups, the Judist groups, okay? The Judist groups. And as a Jew, I can tell you, there were Jews in favor of Hitler. There were Jews in favor of Hitler, and he killed them, just the way he killed all over the rest of my relatives. I'm telling you right now, I remember when Universal City could hear crickets. They are turning it into another downtown Hollywood. That's what their author and super progressives like Rosendahl, "It's a no-brainer!" Will vote for it. He will vote for it, and you will all vote for it. But we will kill Proposition A on the ballot. We must poison their wells, there's a half-cent sales tax coming up, poison their wells. We have to stop it.
Mr. President, he is not talking about this item.
Universal City, Universal City. City Attorney here? All he does is heckle me. Telling you right now, Universal City as we know it, as we know it from the 1920s, dies today.
Mr. Dude.
There is one dude that knows what he's talking about. Entertaining, entertainment is not what we need. We need basic services, dental, medical, et cetera, especially housing for all, and a new way of doing business where City Hall does not have their little dirty hands on everything. City Hall is victimizing the very people that elect them. You are a bunch of idiots thinking that you are so smart, but the people are going to come and overcome. The guy is right. Listen to Mr. Walsh, he's usually right.
Thank you very much. That completes the cards at this time, other than Lisa Sarkin for the final card. Thank you.
I'm so disappointed with the last two statements. I can't even answer any of that, but what they just said was totally ridiculous. I live there, I know what's going to happen, I know what was planned and how it's been rearranged. I had a statement from our president regarding item number 33. Lisa Sarkin, Studio City Neighborhood Council, Vice President. Mrs. Sarkin is authorized to speak on behalf of President John Walker for the Studio City Neighborhood Council. As it relates to the sign district also being discussed today, our council and our community only accepts the use of the term, quote, "sign district," unquote, as it relates to the NBC Universal Evolution Plan. As long as the digital signage permitted within the sign district is limited to the one sign at the entrance to Universal Studios from Lancashire Boulevard. It has been agreed upon by the representatives from NBC Universal, the Neighborhood Council, and our councilman's office that no digital billboards will be incorporated into this project, except those inside the park, and that those inside the park will only be visible from inside the property. With that understanding, we are in favor of this project moving forward and welcome it into our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarkin. That completes the public hearing on this matter, these items. Mr. City Attorney, I'm gonna ask the clerk to now vote on it. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Kocorian, thank you so much.
If nobody else.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, Mr. Kocorian, on this item as well. So on this, Madam Clerk, which one do we vote on first? 33, as in front of us members, 33 in front of us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes. That ordinance will be held over for a second reading, unless 12 members are for reconsideration.
Where is 12 members here? Okay. Hold on, say, how many members are in council right now? Okay, so we're gonna hold these matters, because Mr. Weston is down the hall at the exhibit, and he'll be right back. Next item, Madam Clerk. Item 25, please. Cards for 25? We're gonna hold 32 and 33 on the desk. Sit down and relax, think about your next picture. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. President, for item 25, public comment has been heard.
Public comment has been heard, so let's see, is there anyone who wants to speak on item 25? We'll note these cards.
This item was called special for Councilman Perry.
Ms. Perry, thank you very much, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. As a city, we're working very hard to engage the public, and I introduce this motion because I believe it is vital that we do all that we can to increase voter outreach and access and turnout in our elections. Voter turnout is a fundamental quality of fair elections and supports our efforts to get our constituents involved in local government and play an active role in shaping their future. In the past, the turnout in city elections has been extremely low. Low turnout is usually attributed to a feeling of disengagement from the system because of the lack of perceived effectiveness of voting to change policy. And though I recognize that it is an initiative that we cannot implement for 2013, I still believe that we need to move forward and have a larger conversation about how we develop for the future and reaching out to all of our voters. The city has spent a lot of time on matching funds and supporting the development of voter outreach materials, but I think we've overlooked a very simple and vital piece of the puzzle to make the voters more, to make it easier for voters to be more accessible through voter outreach and increasing turnout through measures such as early voting, expanding voting centers, creating alternative voting days, synchronizing with national and local elections, same-day voter registration, vote by mail, and voting at community centers or houses of worship. Some of these are discussed in the report prepared by the city clerk that is before you today. The barriers to voting, such as registration and untimely scheduling of elections during the work week, further expand the disparity in turnout between low and high-income voters. Removal of those barriers, barriers has the potential not only to increase turnout, but to narrow the gap in voting disparities. So I wanted to have this discussion today so that we can hear from the voter advocate community organizations and incorporate their ideas as we move forward. And, Mr. Chair, if you would allow, a public comment, period, and whatever you...
Hold on just a second, please, because we did file that. We're gonna have a one-minute comment.
I just want to finish, let me just finish, I just want to insert that. And then, I just want to say thank you to the advocates who are here, Common Cause, the California Participation Project, the Thai Community Development Center, and of course, the National Association of Latino Elected Officials, and to the Disability Rights California for submitting written comments. We must not forget the needs of this community. These advocates are working hard every day and are hearing directly from the people we are trying to reach. And also, thank you to the county registrar for coming out... And also, thank you to the county registrar for coming out. We look forward to working closely with you to synchronize our systems. Los Angeles needs this.
Okay, Madam, uh, Ms. Perry, we're two minutes over. I'd like to get the public a chance to speak, so we can wrap that up.
Okay, well, I introduce the motion, so I thought I would normally get six minutes.
No, I'm, because we had our identity committee, but whatever you would like, Ms. Perry, I'm just saying, I'm trying to keep the calendar.
I can wrap it up, if you'll just let me have a few more seconds, uh, instead of, and I hope that we do not note and file this item today. And I would like the city clerk to report back in ninety days after the end of the last election with an update of their continued efforts and advancements working with these voter advocacy groups. And I'd like to ask the city clerk to, uh, develop a list of achievable goals and recommendations with timeframes associated with them. It's very important to our democracy to encourage voter participation by making our city polling places as accessible as possible.
Is there a second?
Thank you on that. We have some cards that Ms. Perry asked, we have a one-minute comment, uh, and I'm going to call the names right now, and if you could come up. Lawrence Joe, Kathy Fong, is that correct, Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Astrid Garcia, is Chauncey here? Come on up, Chauncey. We do a five-minute public comment, we're going to run the clock down, but if you could make your comments and share for the time. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, councilmembers. Uh, thank you for having this very important conversation about how we can improve voter participation in cities' elections. Uh, my name is Lawrence Joe, I'm the direct, the project director of the California Participation Project. Um, we are part of the L.A. City Votes Outreach Coalition assembled by the city's clerk's office, and we've been convening a group of nonprofit organizations committed to civic and electoral participation since June, when we first got together to coordinate activities, share resources, and plan for the first-ever National Voter Registration Day on September twenty-fifth. We have continued to meet since then because we see the value of collaborating and coordinating, uh, particularly when there are limited resources committed to municipal elections. One of the points that I want to share is how important it is for the city to partner with community organizations like ours to do community outreach, and I applaud the city clerk's office for doing so this election. Um, the other thing that I'd like to point out is that there's no master civic engagement calendar, um, and we would urge the city to find a way to work with departments like the Department of Urban Empowerment, um, to coordinate those calendars, and organizations doing the same thing at our website, California Participation Project.
Thank you, Lawrence. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Kathy Fong with California Common Cause. Um, we are extremely pleased to be here today and to acknowledge that the city council is having this very important conversation. Even though we've got an election that's right around the corner, what we're really focused on is 2015, and you need that much time to implement some of these changes and to have a thoughtful conversation. So this is the right time to be doing this. There are actually a lot of exciting developments that are happening around the state. Um, we've just implemented online voter registration, which brought in almost a million new voters into the state in November of 2012. The state just passed same-day registration, and imagine what that will do for Los Angeles to really open up, uh, for people who missed the voter registration deadline, the possibility of voting in those last two weeks, uh, even though they're not registered. And, um, we are looking forward to working with the city clerk's office to explore other options, whether it's early voting options, vote by mail, or the dramatic change, which be changing the election day from a March-May schedule to something that more voters would understand, possibly November. Um, so we are very excited. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, Astrid Garcia with the Nelo Educational Fund, the National Association of Latino-Elected and Appointed Officials. We are a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that have worked to increase the civic engagement of the Latino community in the American political process for over thirty years. We're also part of the L.A. City Votes Committee. Um, we applaud the city for its leadership in looking at this. Currently, there are over three hundred thousand Latinos that are eligible to register to vote and vote on Election Day in the city of Los Angeles. This number will continue to increase in the near future as Latinos turn eighteen and adjust their citizenship status. It's therefore timely and necessary to look at this issue and, uh, make changes to increase, um, electoral participation. To address this, we, uh, want to talk about the early voting. Uh, both early voting and voting centers will help to increase, uh, voter participation for Latinos and underrepresented communities, and we will submit written comment with detailed recommendations to, um, to enhance this as well. Thank you.
All right, Chauncey, the mayor of Taitown.
Hello, my name is Chauncey Marterell. I come here before you to speak on the issue of expanding voting accessibility and improving voting turnout. I work with the Thai Community Development Center in Hollywood to provide Thai community with access to voter education and voting materials in the Thai language. While we appreciate the efforts of the city to develop in-language materials, we believe much more needs to be accomplished to fully realize the goals aspired by the Voting Rights Act and the democratic foundations this nation is built on. As a result, the single biggest theme we have come across to helping improve voter registration and turnout has been the issue of accessibility. Accessibility in regards to access of materials in varying languages, rules of voting, information and candidates, times for voting, how to request more information, and who to contact. While this information may be easy for those of us with English proficiency, the ability to get this information is very difficult for people whose primary language is not English. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Bo here? Come on up, Bo, please. Andrew, Andrew Gnera, thank you. Lennox, I want to pronounce your last name correctly, please state it for the record. Thank you.
Hello, good morning. My name is Bo Sevananskun. I'm here before you to speak on the issue of expanding voting accessibility and improving the voter turnout. I work with the Thai Community Development Center, and then during the past election, I have been doing an outreach in the Thai community, and then I noticed that it has been very difficult for the minority to vote in the U.S. or in Los Angeles. So I'm here to propose to you that we should consider early voting as an alternative voting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bo? Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Andrew Naya. I work with the Thai Community Development Center in Hollywood. Um, I'm also here to speak about, uh, improving voter turnout and voter registration. Um, I'd like to share that in 2001, a task force for a commission chaired by former presidents, Jimmy Carter and Gerald Ford, concluded that registration laws enforced throughout the United States are among the world's most demanding and are one reason why voter turnout in the United States is near the bottom of the developed world. And I think, uh, some of this is accessibility, uh, due to accessibility and just being able to, to reach the polls. So I think we need to think of, uh, alternative voting methods, uh, you know, alternative voting methods, whether, um, you're just increasing, you know, the vote by mail date, you know, making it earlier, or, uh, trying to look for more voting sites and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is Tyler. And you come up as well.
Do I start?
Yeah. Say your name.
Uh, my name is Lennox.
Yes, I got that. How do you pronounce your last name, Lennox?
Uh, Chai Vera.
Chai Vera, thank you.
Uh, hello, uh, city council members and city officials. My name is Lennox, and I am also here to represent the Thai Community Development Center, uh, who has been working on the issue of expanding, uh, voting accessibility and improving voter turnout within the Thai community. Um, and a proposal I'd like to, uh, bring up with you all is that states should change opt-in address updates to opt-out ones on DMV change of address forms, and should require other state agencies to similarly report address changes to election officials. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Tyler Forster, the Thai Community Development Center. Um, I want to highlight and add, um, some recommendations that the city should, um, move on. First, requiring permit voter registration systems, so that once voters get registered, they'll stay on the rolls when they move. We all know this is an issue. Um, second, that the city should support the states automatically updating voters' addresses by using U.S. Postal Service data. Um, again, more of the same issue, and then keep people registered through carefully-designed and transparent purge procedures that notify voters and provide opportunity to make corrections. Obviously, this last point is contingent on having good records, and, uh, the city should be following this. Um, just a personal comment, too, I think that voter turnout is somewhere around ten percent, and I think this is an issue that we all need to address as a city and as a people. We need to, uh, be sure that we're doing our part. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Billy, is this Billy Lacy?
Hi, my name, hi, my name is Billy. I'm also working with the Thai Community Development Center. Um, I'm also a, uh, voter educator and an outreach person, and in, in the field, I've been noticing that with the seniors that, that, um, they, they have low participation because they don't know who to vote, they don't have access to know who, who they vote. So I'm proposing into, to improve the voter turnout, to change the, the, uh, election date to match with the federal elections. That way, um, it's easier for the commission also to streamline everything. So, uh, that's my two cents.
Thank you very much. Donna Periman, last card. Donna?
Good, I didn't remember if I put one in. Uh, yes, the biggest problem, I do believe in voter participation, I vote, I vote, I like to be able to see a lot more people who are voting for the council members and for the mayor, so be a bigger group of people that are, uh, voting. But we, one thing we've got to make sure, especially when you got a, like, online type of thing, that, uh, there's not going to be any problems of somebody else stealing somebody else's identity, and that somebody else is not voting three, four, five times somehow on the internet, so, or voting and pretending like there's somebody else, so...
Donna, thank you very much for your comment.
Yeah, anyway, okay.
Okay, that completes the cards. Ms. Perry?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And again, I want to say, say thank you to all of the advocacy groups who are here today. Thank you very, very much. And to the city clerk, I want to applaud you for your L.A. City Votes campaign and your willingness to really reach out with all the advocacy groups to disseminate election information to more communities, especially those communities that have high concentrations of non-native English speakers. Now, I look forward to us becoming much more creative so that we can convert non-voters to become first-time voters, because it will yield longer-term civic participation. So again, I want to make sure that we do not note and file this effort, and to ask the city clerk to report back, and Mr. Chair, Madam, thank you very much. I got a second already. Uh, I think I said forty-five days after the last election. Uh, I just want to check the record and be consistent. Ninety, I said ninety, okay. Ninety days after, uh, the last election, to come back with an update on their efforts with timeframes and the advances they have made with these, uh, advocacy groups who are here today, and a list of achievable goals.
Thank you very much. So ordered, seconded by Mr. Rosendahl. You have that, Madam City Clerk?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, do we need to vote on anything?
Yes, and what's before council is Ms. Perry's motion.
Very good. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. Next item will be item three, we're going to continue it, uh, one day. One day, Mr. City Attorney, all right?
That's the February sixth.
Good. Item six was called special by a member. Uh, Mr. Englander is out of the room, he is not part of this vote, but he wanted to call it special to make sure he noted that he was out of the room. Uh, let's take up item six, please. Madam Clerk.
Item six, called special by Councilman Englander.
Okay, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right.
I'm sorry, ten ayes, one no.
One no on that one. Thank you very much. Next item will be item thirty-two. Mr. Englander, back, Mr. Deputy of the Twelfth District, will you bring Mr. Englander back in right now? Thank you. We're going to take thirty-two and thirty-three with twelve members here. Mr. City Attorney, please explain. Thank you. So let's, uh, vote for reconsideration of thirty-three. Let's open the roll, close the reconsideration, so ordered. All right, you're going to open the roll on thirty-three?
It's for reconsideration.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes.
Now, item thirty-three is before council.
Ms. Perry, do you have, we want to speak on this, Ms. Perry?
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I stepped thirty-two.
You want to speak on thirty-three?
No.
No, very good.
No, I didn't.
Okay. Thank you, Mitch. All right, we got twelve members. Thank you very much, Mr. Englander. We took care of six. All right, now we got it right, this is good right now. Let's open the roll on thirty-three, Mr. City Attorney? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
That's it, okay, thirty-three. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Fourth with on that. Now let's go to thirty-two, right, Mr. City Attorney?
Correct.
Let's open the roll. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote, as John Forster says.
Twelve ayes.
Eleven, twelve ayes? Twelve ayes, Madam Clerk?
Twelve ayes.
Fourth with on all that. Do we have any other twelve vote items?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, for items thirty-four and thirty-five, you wish to reconsider those at this moment.
Do they need any, did they already satisfy the public comment?
Um, yes, they were voted on, there was only eleven votes, uh, since there's twelve members present.
Okay, so let's reconsider those ordinances. That's a good idea, Madam City Clerk. Vote for reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote on reconsideration.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes. Let's consider those twelve vote items right now.
Items thirty-four and thirty-five.
Let's, uh, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes on those matters, so fourth with on those matters. What's next? Item five is requested at this time.
We're going to have one public comment by Carmen Totanich, and then we'll hold it back on the desk.
Okay, so we're going to call item five right now, and then we're going to hold it on the desk, but we have our city attorney, Mr. Carmen Totanich, who want to speak for the, with the podium or the center table, whatever you desire.
Good morning, mister's presidents. Uh, I'm coming here this morning, um, because I know there's a vote on this matter coming up, and in looking at what's on the, um, on the ballot, the motion that the, that the council is looking at today is most like the one that was passed by this same council back in 2010. And I'd ask the council, in consideration of this, to vote yes on this measure, to put it on the ballot. I believe this is the most sensible regulation that we can come up with in this, in this era of turmoil. Just today, the Supreme Court is hearing arguments on this, and this gives our city an opportunity to, to regulate medical marijuana and to get medical marijuana to those people that truly need it, and still maintain some sensibility in terms of where these shops can be located and the number of shops that we can have in Los Angeles. So with that said, I'd ask, implore the council to vote yes on this, and let, let the voters speak. Let the voters tell us what they want in terms of this. Let's not take it out of the hands of the voters, let's put it into the hands of the public. Thank you.
Mr. Carmen Totanich, our city attorney, thank you. And Mrs. Totanich, good to see you. It's Take Your Wife to Work Day, good job, I love that. Uh, let's, uh, put, put her on, put her on the desk, let's hold it on the desk. Next item.
Item twenty-two, called special by Councilman Englander.
Mr. Englander, item twenty-two is up. Very good. Uh, have we had to satisfy the public comment on that?
Yes, Mr. President.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes. Next item.
Item twenty-four, called special by Councilman Englander.
All right, Mr. Englander withdraws his public comment on that. Thank you for your leadership on this item, Mr. Englander. Let's open the roll, close the roll.
Thirty-eight.
Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes, so ordered. Next item.
Item twenty...
We're going to go to thirty-eight right now, Madam Clerk, thank you. Thirty-eight. Do I have 38 comment? 38, I'd like to, very special Carol Schatz, the leader of the Central City Association, Doug, I want to say it correctly, Arsenet, Arseno. Brenda Momsen.
Wait a minute. President of the Central City Association, Downtown Center BID. It's no news that L.A. has long been thought of as a place that's hostile to business and to doing business. When we, as the private sector, talk about a more business-friendly environment, we don't want a kiss on the cheek. We want an environment that's conducive to new investment in our city. Jobs don't miraculously appear. Someone has to invest capital to create them. We know something about that. For the $16 billion that's been invested in downtown since 1999, we've had a, we have been responsible for bringing in a very large percentage of that through our deal-making. This economic development structure, we think, puts a focus on job creation. We support it. In terms of the nonprofit, it needs to be highly independent and completely organized and run by the private sector. If you're going to do it, you need to do it right and take a hands-off approach to its management. It should have an administrative link to the new department and report directly to the deputy mayor. Otherwise, you may be creating another level of bureaucracy. It should be narrowly focused on deal-making, asset management, and facilitating transactions. The new department that you're considering is important for consolidation purposes, but it must be innovative and entrepreneurial. We don't need another bureaucracy or a place to put recently laid off employees. If it does not serve business as its primary goal, it will not foster job creation. And the GM must be somebody with real private sector experience. That being said, we strongly support this structure, and we urge you to do the same. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Carol, and I hope you feel better. Doug, come forward. Brenna Morrison, Mark Glassick, Alisa Smith.
Thank you, council member. I'm Doug Arseno of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, representing more than 370 businesses that have created over 100,000 jobs in Los Angeles and the surrounding area. VICA strongly supports the creation of an economic development department. And this must go hand in hand with the creation of a new nonprofit run by the private sector. While we are told that this will be the model, we know all too well that the devil's in the details. We need the right people running it and simply cannot afford political bargaining and the inefficiencies that plague the city government. Furthermore, multiple existing nonprofit organizations already serve several of these purposes. We encourage the council to look into ways to look with existing nonprofits as this concept develops. We wish to thank the mayor's office for taking the lead on this initiative and hope that the council will share in a unified view of the city as a thriving international economic hub rivaled only by the greatest of world cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please come forward, Brenna Morrison, Mark Glassick, Alisa Smith, please go right ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Brianna Morrison, and I'm a health policy analyst with Community Health Councils. We're a South L.A.-based nonprofit organization that works to improve the quality of life of historically underserved communities throughout the Los Angeles area. While we recognize the noteworthy efforts of the city to establish entities responsible for economic development, it is imperative that the department's development process become an inclusive process that incorporates the perspectives and input of the wide array of stakeholders that are impacted by economic development or the lack thereof in their communities. The scope of economic development should not only include jobs and investments in historically neglected low-income and communities of color, but it should also include support for development that can help to reduce the prolific disparities in the quality of life through the promotion of health and sustainability. Due to the expedited process, development process of this EDD and its currently narrow scope as described in the report by the HRNA, we request the institution of a public comment period for the aforementioned report. This period can provide impacted organizations, neighborhood councils, local businesses, and residents that have not been previously engaged in the EDD's scoping process, the opportunity to provide input and to help maximize the department's efforts to positively impact the lives of all Los Angeles residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, Alisa Smith. Is Alisa Smith here? Okay.
Good morning, council members. I will be echoing many of the comments by my colleague Brianna Morrison. My name is Mark Glassick, and I am a policy analyst with Community Health Councils. We definitely recognize the council's work to establish a successor entity to the Community Redevelopment Agency. There is definitely a need to prioritize investment in chronically under-invested communities such as South Los Angeles and East Los Angeles. However, the current proposal as it stands leaves too many questions unanswered. Furthermore, the lack of specificity is troubling. The use of this much public funding without substantial study of impacts to other departments like the Community Development Department requires a greater degree of community engagement. Therefore, Community Health Councils is calling for a 60-day comment period for neighborhood councils, community-based organizations that will be affected by this department to be part of the conversations going forward. To highlight the need for more community engagement, South L.A. Council districts, including 8, 9, 10, and 15, rank in the bottom quartile of life expectancy and economic hardship amongst not only all L.A. City Council districts, but all L.A. County incorporated and unincorporated cities. Clearly, these two entities must address the nexus of health and economic development. The need is too great. Furthermore, the city has a municipal and state requirement to prioritize surplus properties for the development of open space and affordable housing. The 50 Parks Initiative is a great start, but it will only add 4% of net acres to South L.A. parks. The new Economic Development Department and Citywide Economic Development Nonprofit must leverage surplus properties to dramatically increase park space, especially in areas that are park poor like South L.A. and East L.A. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, honorable council members. I'm here representing the Executive Committee of LANK, the Los Angeles Neighborhood Council Coalition. I'm here asking you to delay your decision on this matter for 60 days in order that the neighborhood councils may weigh in on this big notion. I think, and I'll be submitting some things later, some copies of my comments, email that was sent out by Terrence Gomans, our president, last night, a letter from James O'Sullivan with many, many questions, and also a letter that was written to the IRS from Charity Watch, which calls for full disclosure of charity executive compensation, which is relevant to all 501(c)(3)'s. I think I speak on behalf of everybody when I say we need to make it easy to do business and not in the city of Los Angeles, not just fancy projects, but real community-sustaining projects that improve our daily lives and improve the quality of life for everyone who lives in our city, no matter their personal income level. More time for the N.C.s that were elected to represent their communities, who know what happens on the streets of varsity best, and how this new department is to be administered and how its funds will be dispersed should be of concern to us all. So please postpone this item for 60 days so the neighborhood councils will have a chance to weigh in. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Handel, John Walsh, Dow House Dude, and Daniel Jones. Morning, Jay.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, council members. My name is Jay Handel. I'm here today as the chair of the Neighborhood Council Budget Advocates. Once again, overtaken away from us the ability to weigh in on a project. Council members, when are you going to let neighborhood councils participate in these decisions? Why is it we find out 72 hours before? I get it, it's the Brown Act, but it's not right. We have been asking, Mr. President, that you give us a seat at the table. You let us weigh in. This item shows $32.5 million to be spent out of a budget that is currently projected at $211 million deficit. A $300 million deficit projected the following year, and you're asking for 15% and not showing us how the money's going to be spent, what the projected revenues are that this Economic Development Department's going to bring in, and what the breakdown is on where the money's going to be spent on employees and how it's going to be deployed. We ask you again, as LANK did, as everyone has in the last 30 days, from your bond issue to your sales tax issue to this issue, you're going to spend our money, you have to show us how it's going to be effective. We cannot afford for this city council to continue to go on 72 hours and just spend our money and not have, give us full, open, transparent disclosure. I ask every council member here who's running for something or not, make a motion, postpone this for 60 days minimum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I asked for a 60-year delay before the vote. I'm telling you right now, this is the, this is the bureaucratic answer. Boy, that was a short two minutes. This is the bureaucratic answer to the death of the CRA. If you were here last Friday, we had the one-year anniversary of drop-dead CRA Day. It's gone. Now, CDD, which would be a competitor, doesn't want this. You have bureaucrats fighting over bureaucratic turf. Meanwhile, the answer to this is simple. Vote to everybody out there, and I'm the only one who talks to the people out there. I'm the only one that recognizes you. All we have to do to get rid of this Economic Development Corporation, which will be involved with the Citywide Economic Development Nonprofit, CDDN, all this maze, is vote no on Proposition A, the Herb Wesson half-cent sales tax. If you believe that Herb Wesson needs $400 million a year...
Mr. Walsh, stay on the subject.
The subject's Herb Wesson, isn't it?
The subject is not. Okay, your time is gone. Miss, stay on the subject.
Just notice the way I'm treated here.
You're treated with the utmost respect.
HollywoodHighlands.org. Now, I'm telling you right now, this Economic Development Department does not get tax increment dollars. It does not have, which the CRA did, hundreds of millions into billions of dollars siphoned off state property tax. This new organization will not get a dime. There is nothing except, they are creating new agencies while the city of Los Angeles and the voters are telling you, get smaller, not bigger. And I'm telling you that we are going to take down, and incidentally, when it is defeated, they will blame it on Herb Wesson.
No, stay on the subject.
Okay, I guess Herb Wesson is a poor letter word.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Your time, no, your time. Mr. Dude, Mr. Dude, come forward.
The dude is always right, you know? He hits you right in the nail or the head, the head of the nail. City Attorney, you look like the Monopoly guy.
No, let's stay on the subject.
Anyway, the subject once again is economic development. For who? For the people that already have too much? It is not for the poor people. You keep creating more poor people, you give the money to the banks instead of the people. And the banks make it very difficult for the people to get along. The banks will take your money and give you 1%, 2%, 3%, and they will lend you money at 20%. What the hell are we saving the banks for, which are not helping the people with economic development? And you're creating agencies so you can waste more money? Stupid!
Mr. Jones.
Good morning. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Charles Conner, I read your article, very touching. You have a bright future, sir. I'm against this proposal at this time anyways. There's a couple words in here. The inequity of bearing the brunt of providing affordable housing. You created that brunt when you appointed the Housing Commission lady, well, she's going to make people not want to participate in housing. That's why you have the validity to make that complaint. Focused on low-income and blooded communities, what's the focus? Creating a nonprofit entity at this time, it's an exit strategy, an exit plan because within the next mayoral change, there's going to be people who focused on this plan who are going to need a place to work. They're going to be asked to leave the building because they did not come with this next There's the financial impact because, well, the people that are writing the plan are still working here. Why aren't they implementing it now? Half the people in the Civic Center for mayoral appointments for the next people that are going to be here, well, what are they going to do? Why don't they continue what the work is being done now in-house? This is a dummy corporation, and the fact that if anybody passes this special item, well, people are dumb. They're robbing you of 300, $32.5 million so they can have another job after they're asked to leave City Hall. I'll be back for Stingray.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Today is a great step forward in creating a new economic development for our city. It's important that we develop this model so we can assure flexibility in our approach and we can respond proactively to the ebbs and flows of our economy. Developing this new Economic Development Department is one piece of the puzzle towards making Los Angeles business-friendly. We have to continue to focus on development reform. That includes everything from updating community plans to modernizing the zoning code, and these need to continue to be a priority. About several weeks ago, I introduced a motion asking that the new economic development model incorporate a strategic plan to address the needs of immigrant-based businesses modeled after Mayor Rahm Emanuel in Chicago. And I'd also like to make a motion asking that the term sheet prepared by the chief legislative analyst and the chief administrative officer for the Citywide Economic Development Nonprofit include a strong component focused on immigrant business and workforce development. We already know from multiple studies that people who are immigrants are more likely to open their own business than their non-immigrant counterparts, and we also know that small businesses are an important backbone to our economy. They account for 70% of job creation and provide vital neighborhood services. I would like for the Citywide Economic Development Nonprofit to have a plan to capture investors and entrepreneurs, because there's a wealth of opportunity through EB5 and private investment that we need to be strategic and capture. We also must focus on the energy of the newly immigrated community as a critical component of our current and future workforce so that they continue to have access to training opportunities for emerging and growing industries. To that end, I'd like to ask the Community Economic Development Department or the New Economic Development Department, whatever you want to call it, to make sure that there's a strategy in place from the department's side. We call ourselves an international city. We call ourselves a global city, and we need to capitalize on that through our actions. We need to make sure that we reach out to all of the international representatives who are here, council generals based in Los Angeles, Los Angeles Inc., the faith-based community and community-based organizations to break down traditional barriers that exist between people and their government. Now, I just have a quick question for the chief legislative analyst and the chief administrative officer. A few quick questions, if you don't mind. I'd like to ask you both how the head of... I'd like to ask you both how the head of the new Economic Development Department will be selected. Are there any existing organizations that have expressed any interest?
Well, the anticipation is the new head of the Economic Development Department would be selected similar to, excuse me, to all general managers, an appointment made by the mayor and confirmed by the city council.
Now, I understand that this new department, if it's formed, the size of the Community Development Department as we currently know it will be reduced, and is that based on analysis or is this just supposition or conjecture? And I wanted to get your comments on that.
Well, there is no anticipation of reducing city staff at this juncture. There's reorganization, there's consolidation.
Okay.
There is not staff elimination, and one of the things that we are going to need to do, which will be before you in the future, is come back with your options on exactly how to establish that new department via ordinance and what those functions are, and that was one of the instructions coming out of committee, that we come back with that.
So, I understand that we're also proposing to transfer city real estate assets to this new Economic Development Department. Do we have an idea yet about how much revenue they are estimated to generate, and if you have any ideas yet, I'd just like for you to share them.
Well, I will start, and I know that there's a separate sort of best practices study that McGill can address relative to asset management, but the short answer to your question is no. And in fact, the reason that we think it's so important to have the new nonprofit handle asset management is because while city staff does a very good job with asset management for city facilities and housing city staff, we do not know the commercial real estate market, and we have no idea what those properties are worth.
That's correct. Concurrent to this action, we are also seeking consultants to help us better manage our overall assets. So, the first part would be to identify what assets we have, and then from that, identify which potential assets could be utilized and maximized through economic development, and then work with the nonprofit for that purpose. You know, the immediate example that we all know of is obviously the L.A. Mall. The L.A. Mall is an asset that we're all very familiar with, and I don't think there would be anyone who would argue that it's maximized in terms of the kind of revenue potential and the kind of amenities that it provides our employees, but the surrounding community. What we envision is working with this nonprofit, having them identify what the best use for, what the market demands in the surrounding area, finding investors and a partner to engage in that work. Ultimately, that would come to you for final decision before that actually happens, but it's a, it's a, it's a practice that has worked around the country, particularly in New York City, which is where they are effective to utilize city-owned assets to maximize economic development.
That's great, and I thank you very much to both of you. So, I'd like to ask that the chief legislative analyst and the chief administrative officer report back to council regarding the status of the Community Development Department and the steps taken to make it the most efficient model, and that of course includes consolidation of existing departments. I remain concerned about this new model and whether we can push it to the point that it truly addresses underserved communities that receive very little private investment. So, I'd like to explore the possibility of establishing a dedicated revenue stream to be used in disadvantaged communities. I'd also like to make a motion to ask the CLA and the CAO to report back to council on possible ways to tie the port or the, and the airport to assist in providing that dedicated revenue stream for economic development in underserved areas. And again, I stated earlier, we're proposing to transfer real estate assets to this new department, and I want the CAO and CLA to report back on the amount of anticipated revenue that will generate. I'm very grateful that this item is moving forward, and I believe that it does need to be addressed in this year's budget so we can send a very clear message that Los Angeles is in the column of stimulating economic development, and this is a great time to actually create substantive change. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alacone.
Yes, council members, I rise, I rise in support of, of the actions that are before us at this time, and let me say that I want to commend all the participants for coming together to try to devise a new model for economic development in light of the loss of the use of the CRA model. The CRA is admittedly an imperfect model that nevertheless produced a lot of significant economic development projects, which created jobs in our community. Hopefully, we can correct the errors that were made historically, not just in Los Angeles, but throughout the state of California with that model. I do want the council to note that there's an important bill in the legislature, SB1, which would recreate a, an economic development model similar to the tax increment model used by the CRA. I understand that it is being, it is being modeled to center around transit-oriented projects, which is consistent with the Obama administration's desire to do the same with its economic development monies. And I think that the city ought to use that model, whether we, whether SB1 passes or not, I think it would behoove us to be consistent with the federal administration's desire to send, create centers of economic activity around transit-oriented centers. I do want to caution the council that when Mayor Reardon developed the Community Development Bank model, there were considerable problems that arose afterwards. Mike Hernandez and I served on the committee, he chaired it, and I was the vice chair of the committee that, that enabled the creation of that, and where, where we made, where, where we were uninformed about the creation of that model was that the city attorney opined that we could not have input into the nonprofit bank that was created, or it would be an arm of the city. And so, I would caution that as we look at this nonprofit model, that we, we need to reflect on, on how that model is different and avoids the same kinds of problems that emerged with the Community Development Bank. Because the city council did not have input into the Community Development Bank's activities, they made a bunch of bad loans, and the whole organization blew up, and it was a tremendous embarrassment to the city of Los Angeles. So, I caution as to whether it is prudent for us to give up assets to a nonprofit without having complete control over how those assets are being deployed, and, and it, it would behoove the council members to be very careful as we design this. The reason I support this model today is because it is not definitive on, on, on those issues, and, and I'm mentioning them so hopefully the reports that come back will, will get a little more into that and give us a better picture of what we're describing. I absolutely support a deputy mayor on economic development, I absolutely support the creation of an economic development department, and most important of all, I absolutely appreciate and fully support the improvement of the collaboration of our Transportation Department, our Building and Safety Department, our Planning Department, and all the other departments that, that have tremendous impact on economic development, and rather than do it project by project, we need to do this in a coordinated way. And, and so, for all those reasons, I support it, but I do express a word of caution. Let's take this slow, let's do it deliberate, let's do it right.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. Let me just ask a couple of questions. On, I couldn't make out in looking at the material as to the role of the nonprofit in the department, and if I understand nonprofits, normally they're independent, and in giving them that independence, then how does the city influence if that's what our role is, or do they need, do they stay arms distance and do what they think is best as opposed to the policies of the city or the direction or influence of the CLA, CAO, or the council?
Well, the anticipation is that the nonprofit will be, excuse me, an independent body. However, in order for the nonprofit to operate, the council is going to have to adopt the strategic plan for economic development, and the council will have a contract with the nonprofit that will address the issues. And again, those are not before you, it's going to take a whole lot of work to put that together, but that's really where the meat of the relationship is going to exist in terms of how city property is used, in terms of the allocation of site-specific tax revenue, for example, that's, that's city revenue, the policy implications around those. So, the role of the city and the council will be the adoption and the strategic plan and the approval of the contract with the nonprofit.
Is it similar to the nonprofit that is in housing about NSP funds? To where they get the NSP funds, go out and buy foreclosed property and rehabilitate it, and so, I mean, is there kind of a similar relationship as that?
I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I'm not that familiar with exactly what that relationship is, but we can get back to you on that.
But in addition to what Jerry said, there's also, you know, as projects get developed, the final decision is still going to be yours, and it's important to clarify that point. So, a lot of the work will be done by the nonprofit based on guidelines and a framework that you've given them and set in the, in the contract, and as specific projects get delivered, the decision point will be yours and the mayor's.
The thing I'm concerned about is how do, how do you have the influence to initiate a project? I mean, that's would be the big issue of getting them interested in something that is in your community as opposed to them saying, this is where I think we should put our emphasis.
I think honestly that that won't change from the way it is today. I think many projects do, are generated in your district, I think you'll continue to come to me in my office and McGill in his office and to do initial vetting, and then we can help you work with this new department to find out all of the pieces of the puzzle that might help put the project together, but you're going to a centralized area in which to try to put that all together rather than, you know, DOT and planning and CDD and housing and, you know, all of these various silos.
My other question is that for years, we had the problem of CDD and dealing with their administrative costs and it flowing into the general fund, and if I understand the funding, a lot of either the Economic Development Department or the new foundation, either one or both are going to have block grant money. Now, how do we protect the general fund that we don't get out of balance between the program and the administrative?
Well, I think again, irrespective of the structure of a new economic, economic development function, that is an issue that you're going to have to deal with. There are expectations that block grant is going to be reduced, so it's going to be a continuing pressure, but those are ultimately going to be budgetary decisions, you know, by, by the city council.
Okay, but that's what I'm concerned about, because at one point, we were like $4 or $5 million into the general fund, and at one point, the block grant was being decided after the budget, so it was being imposed on the budget as opposed to the reverse, and you could get in some real money very quickly by having that imbalance, and so I'm just wondering what's the safe door?
It comes down, it comes down to the extent that the council and the mayor supplant or backfill any reductions at the federal level, and so, you know, we have something pending right now with potential sequestration cuts taking effect in the next few months, providing, you know, the city a hole of over $100 million in a very short period of time. Should that actually occur, then the hard work is on, on our side to try to figure out, given our own budgetary situation, are we in a situation to backfill some of those reductions? But as it relates to the nonprofit, the nonprofit, the revenue that the nonprofit gets will be tied to the contract, so the liability should, will be mitigated through that contract.
My final question, is the only revenue to the nonprofit from the city, or do they have the ability to go out and generate other funds from other sources?
Absolutely. The revenue we're talking about is startup funding, and by way of comparison, we actually looked at the startup funding for the Economic Development Corporation in New York that also required startup funding. It now returns significant money to the city of New York. So, over time, from transaction fees on transactions, from, again, the concept of, you know, property management, and rather than paying a private property management firm to do it right, where the nonprofit is generating those fees to cover its own expenses and to plow back into economic development.
And it's important to point out, too, that the goal is not to have this nonprofit compete with revenue generated by other economic development corporations and nonprofits that exist in the city, like the Chamber, like the Central City Association, the LAEDC, and many neighborhood community-based economic development nonprofits. This is really intended to be a self-funded organization that has, where the city provides some level of initial revenue, but ultimately, the deals themselves will help provide ongoing revenue.
Okay, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the good work on this. This is definitely a positive step forward. I think it's been 13 years I've been working on this since before I got here. Since we had the first draft, this is a really great improvement and much more flushed out, appreciate the greater detail from the first time, when there's still, you know, a thing or two missing, which isn't necessarily about the structure, but a larger question about, and this structure can certainly do it, but the analysis of what problem we're trying to solve, not internally, but I mean externally in the economy, what are, what are the goals? How do we judge this department? One of my frustrations with departments right now is we're never sure how to, how to judge them, because we don't put metrics out there. We get an occasional general manager who does, a chief bratton who says, I'm going to reduce crime by 10%, and we can judge whether we hit that, but, you know, are we trying to cut an unemployment rate? Are we trying to speed up the time by a certain amount that it takes for a business to get open on average? Are we trying to increase the number of businesses by a certain number? Those things to me are, I think, critically important, they don't have to be in part of this package, but it would be nice to fold them in as soon as possible, and I don't think you necessarily have any sense of that today, so it's not so much a question as a comment. A couple of things that, to Mr. Parks's point, I do wonder with the structure with the IDA under the nonprofit, just in terms of some of the liability and responsibility issues. We may want to look at that in the same way that when we had the EIDC, EITC, EIDC, sorry, which was doing filming before Film LA, all of us were part of the board when it moved to, but it was kind of a nonprofit autonomously. If we're appointing the people still on the IDA, but we no longer have control over it, that's just something to be wary of if there's any abuses that ever come out from the nonprofit. But to me, you know, the clear message here today is there's going to be one place, and this needs to be the beginning of a consolidation. I think if you look at our development stuff, what's going to be confusing here a little bit initially, I think, is that there's been a mayor's business team, there requires a lot of reorganization in the mayor's office for this to work as well, because this essentially starts becoming kind of what the mayor's business team was, and I think that's fine to devolve that from the mayor's office. Ideally, it shouldn't be about knowing an elected official. I mean, I was very happy when a restaurant owner said, hey, we know you, you did a great job in Hollywood, we got open in eight months instead of 18 months, and we're going to do a third restaurant because it was so quick. And as much as it was nice to hear that, I said, you don't, you shouldn't have to know the council member to get that done, it should be part of the instinct. So, I think this department can really establish those metrics, whether planning and building and safety get merged or not, or whether they're part of this, saying, you know, if on average it takes 18 months for a restaurant to get open, what can we do to bring that down to nine months? The job training stuff is described, but it's not so much in the flow chart here as well, and in the, and in the conceptual evaluation and approval process, and I think at the end of the day, we want this to be about jobs, and businesses are the means to the end of that. So, I think we still need some more kind of robust work on that. Can you describe how that, just because I'm, I hit the end of my time, can you describe how that works under this new reorganization? The WIB is no longer under CDD, but it would be under the EDD now? Is that correct?
Yes.
And then, and what consolidation of those jobs programs ultimately do we have, if any, with existing? You know, is there, is there any link to making sure if we're doing strategic initiatives for recruiting certain businesses that we're moving together?
Watch your time.
EDD for the workforce development side, too?
Yes, the concept would be that issues like the Workforce Investment Board administering CDBG services contracts, et cetera, those would stay within the city, but part of the relationship and part of the reason for the nonprofit contracting with EDD is so that there also be the interface, so that the, that the city staff, the department itself is handling the job training and handling those sorts of issues while the EDD is out there, you know, creating the business environment and then connecting the two to make sure that the job, the jobs that are being trained for are the jobs that are being developed out there in the development community. So, that's where we anticipate now anyway where the division would be.
Okay, Mr. Carets, Mr. Labange, and hopefully, Mr. Weesar to close.
Well, I'm fine with the notion of doing this, but I think there, there are a lot of loose ends. As, as Mr. Garcetti said, I think it's kind of strange that we don't really have goals for this organization yet. this organization yet and a formal purpose for the organization and a structure and a way to guarantee that this is very transparent. So I think we want a lot of input as we create this, and particularly the requests from the neighborhood councils, that they be included. How do we do this so that we don't slow down the process and foul it up, but we do slow it down enough to give them the time to have the kind of input they want? And I think as we're structuring this, as it's a little more fluid than I'd like, I'd like to have input from everybody to be able to help finalize and shape what this turns into. So what do we think in terms of their request for 60 days now, or is there a way to at least guarantee that they have 60 days before we come back with closer to a final product?
Well, I'm not sure what the magic is around this particular number of days, but...
And I'm not saying there is a magic, it's just what they requested. It could, I assume it's because neighborhood councils have their meetings once a month or whatever, it gives them a chance to meet.
Well, I think, you know, first, it's important to point out that both myself, Jerry, our consultants have met with dozens of different organizations. In fact, we just had one this morning, and to seek input and reaction to what's being developed. In addition to that, a mass email was sent, the actual report was attached, and input was solicited from even more organizations and individuals. I think the best thing to do is we'll coordinate a meeting immediately with the neighborhood councils or a delegation of the neighborhood councils and walk them through the proposal. I think they probably have a number of questions, some will be able to address, and others, they'll bring important input. And then from that, continue forward on this process so that meeting would take place prior to the next 30 days when we would come back to you.
And I would only add to that, that again, what's before you is approval, really, of the structure. Most of what we're hearing are really important issues that are really strategic planning issues and issues that will be dealt with in the contract. All of that's going to continue concurrently, but in order to set up the nonprofit, it takes a while. So we need to get busy setting up the legal structure of a nonprofit. Concurrent with that, there is going to be outreach in developing the strategic plan, the role of the neighborhood councils, how money gets allocated to underserved areas, all of those issues are going to, they'll all be back before you. This is the, one of many actions that you're going to be taking in the future. So you're not making any final decisions today about exactly what's going to happen.
But certainly, we'd want their input before we finalize anything, so just want to make sure we're focused on that and adequately working with them.
Okay, Mr. Rosen, Mr. Rosendahl, I'm going to call on you now because you're up, and then I have other members I'll get to, but I want to defer to you.
Well, thank you for that, and I'm up because this is an up conversation here. It really is. To bring in the neighborhood councils, to get feedback, to deal with more community groups and get feedback is absolutely right. The openness and transparency that I'm seeing here in the room is fabulous. We put some amendments in it that we all could agree on, and so we're moving in the right direction. I just want to go on the record and thank you all for this. And obviously, colleagues, I look forward to us voting on this.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Labange, followed by Mr. Weezer, and hopefully, Zine to close.
I've heard all this. The thing I want you to have a special wing for is small business. I know we care about big business, but you go down any boulevard, Ventura Boulevard, Hollywood Boulevard, Vermont Avenue, Western Avenue, Central Avenue, Brooklyn Avenue, small business, have a wing for small business. Caesar Chavez Avenue, so in Brooklyn is no more. That is key. And the last thing, I want to study, Jerry, on city yards. I'm proud of our city yards because they got to be in places. But some people say, just sell the city yard. There's a value to a city yard, there's a great value to our technicians in the Department of Transportation, or our street cleaners, or our trash collectors. So make sure, don't sell the city short, but where we can consolidate, do so. And anything I could do to help, please call on me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, we did away with the CRA. Well, the CRA itself, although its primary duty was to assist in low-income areas and blighted areas, by default, it ended up being our Economic Development Department throughout the city, because that's where people went for expertise and advice on how to move forward with economic development activity in the city. But now here we have an opportunity to make it very clear that we have a department that's dedicated for economic development, no matter where you are in the city, but while still keeping in mind a focal point in low-income communities. And I want to make sure we continue to emphasize that. But at the same time, in doing that, in consolidating the CDD, which has some functions, would make sense to come into this, as Ms. Perry brought up, the remaining remainder part of CDD, it's not clear in this report what will happen to it. That's why I submitted a motion to see into the possibility of consolidating that with the Housing Department. But even then, those housing functions may make sense. Whatever's left of CDD, I think, we still need to, we need to figure out where that goes. Nonetheless, I think this is a great way to move forward. This is absolutely necessary. I wish we could move quicker on this. The fact of the matter remains that we not only have to assist people who want to do economic activity in the city, but we have to create opportunities for and attract businesses, such as coming up with criteria as to what are the, how can we attract businesses in emerging industries, identify those emerging industries, have a list of incentives for those businesses to get here. We've seen other cities way ahead of us in terms of having facilities available in emerging industries, telling them, if you come here and locate here, these are your incentives, your breaks that you're going to get in tax, or whatever else can be, and also attracting them throughout the country. So I think we not only want to receive, but we have to be proactive with the department. I think that's what we have to keep in mind as we move forward. What I also like about this is that we're not going to do it alone. We're going to partner with a nonprofit, take advantage, do the research and development that's necessary. We've seen the success in the clean tech incubator that we did down at the Arts District, a lot of success. Problem with that, though, although we've started a lot of small businesses, they're not remaining or staying in the city of LA. We also have to think about, as we do our research and development in this area, how do we keep those businesses here after they get that technical expertise to boot them up? Thank you. And I also think the motion by Mr. Wesson, a lot of questions remain to be answered there, and those, that motion has a lot of good, important questions to be answered. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Zine to close.
Well, thank you, and I think that everyone's had positive comments on this, and to the neighborhood council members, thank you for being here. We don't want to exclude anyone, and it's been stated, we want something positive, we want to help the business community. Where I drive down the street and I see office for lease, storefront for lease throughout the city of Los Angeles, we need to change that and occupy those and put people back to work. So it's a great process, and I think we have time, if I'm not mistaken, to get input from the neighborhood councils, from the community, from the business folks, from everyone involved that wants to make it happen. It's not a secret backdoor deal, it's something that's open with transparency, and it will benefit the entire region. It won't just be in one part of the city. This will be a citywide, so we can help bring people back to work and open up those vacant office fronts, storefronts that we have along the various quarters. So I'm a strong supporter, along, I think everyone else, a unanimous support. But again, we want to make sure we include everyone and not exclude anyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, Madam Clerk, the suggestions earlier by Ms. Perry, we're incorporating them into this because I view them as friendly. Do we need any official, or we're fine with that? Okay. So with that said, let's prepare to vote on this.
And just a clarification, Mr. President, your council is voting on item 38 as amended by motions 38A, 38B, and Ms. Perry's motions.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. Labange, need you in the chair. Will now go to item, item five. Mr. City Attorney, do I, do I have to take public comment on this?
No, you don't.
We do not? Okay, so why don't we go to Mr. Rosendahl? Bill?
Yeah, okay, thank you. Just moving around, folks, it's a wonderful feeling to be able to do this. Obviously, we want to go forward with this. It's a compromise, it respects the fact that people went through a process, they've been paying their taxes, they're doing the best they can, and it allows us, especially people like me who have cancer or diabetes, the health opportunities that are critical for us. In the long run, I look for real leadership out of Washington to change this law, because we're destroying young people's lives, and it's not winning. This war on pot is a war against the young kids. So that's another story for DC. But for us here, this is a step in the right direction. It's a bit of a compromise, but it basically says those with medical needs that are proven, be they cancer survivors like myself, or before, 10 years ago, when I got my first subscription, it was for my diabetes, for the neuropathy in my feet. So it's a legitimate pain reliever. My doctor, my oncologist, absolutely believes that this is helping me. And look at me, I'm walking around now, I have a cane or a walker if I need it, but the truth of the matter is, it's working, and my God, we cannot stop people who have health issues from being able to get access to marijuana. So I support this compromise, and I look forward to us moving forward with it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Rosendahl, as always, thank you. Mr. Carets of the Fifth District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Council President Wesson for bringing together some divergent interests and creating a consensus among some very different stakeholders and coming up with a proposal for medical marijuana that absolutely is a compromise and does what we need to do. It resolves a lot of neighborhood issues, but at the same time, it provides access for patients who desperately need marijuana, in many cases, on a life and death basis. So I think it's great that we're giving the voters an alternative that makes sense, and I ask all of you for an aye vote.
Thank you very much. There are no other speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 3 noes.
Very good. Mr. Muscaino, did you vote no? It wasn't on, but you want to register? Do we need to change that, Mr. City Attorney? We're okay? Nine to four?
It doesn't change the outcome of the vote.
But can you change it for him to make him feel better? Okay, thank you. So ordered. Next item.
Item two, cost push-up for cards.
Is Eduardo Caress, is that right, Eduardo? Did I mispronounce your name? On Third Avenue? Eduardo? Come on up.
Thank you, City Council. I want to comment on this initiative or ordinance that you're putting forward, because it's changed a lot since the 2010 ordinance, let's be honest. And this ordinance that you're putting forward, if you read it, it actually says in the ordinance that the owners don't have to have background checks, it's just the managers. So one person could technically own every medical marijuana dispensary by the ordinance that you have drafted, and they could be a criminal.
The City Attorney?
Okay. And they could be a criminal, they could be in jail right now and operate the dispensaries from inside.
He's not talking about this item.
I understand, but this is the card that he filled out, so what do you do on that, Mr. City Attorney? Please continue.
Wait, can I, can I really, really quick? Wait, you allowed this far?
Thank you for a second, please. You filled out a card for this number?
I didn't know.
And this number is not on marijuana, it's built in safety. You're aware of that? So you could sit down and relax right now. We're going to take billiard and safety, a staff here as well for billiard and safety? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alacon, appreciate that. All right, Madam Clerk, before us, this item.
Excuse me, Mr. President, for item 2G, there is a request to continue it till February 19th.
No objection, February 19th, 2G. Next item.
Council should vote on the remaining items in item two.
Remaining items in item two. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Next item, please.
Item 26, cost push-up by Councilmember Englander.
Mr. Englander, thank you. We have a card.
Thank you very much. This is a motion that I worked on with Mr. Cardness, and we actually had met with folks and out in the Van Nuys area at the airport for quite some time on this before this went through. Because it's a $1.3 billion economic engine here to the San Fernando Valley, it's critically important that Van Nuys gets the due attention it needs from LAWA. And oftentimes, as we know, unfortunately, or fortunately, LAWA has a lot of other priorities. And we've heard over the years, all kinds of horrific nightmares from the folks at Van Nuys Airport, where they don't get the attention, where leases are expired, and they operate for three, four, and five years, oftentimes trying to update their leases, and then all of a sudden, they get a bill for tens of thousands of dollars in backdated rents for the increase that they should have gotten on day one. That oftentimes, it takes too long to negotiate new proposals. There's a vacant property there that's been vacant, as we all know, for many, many years right next to the air tell. It's gone out to RFP, I believe, three times, and it's been pulled back because it didn't have the staff and attention down there, and therefore, we're losing money. We've all heard about what was going on as well with LAUSD, and I believe it was Eric Garcetti's motion to try to keep the mechanic school there, which is critically important as well. And so with all these issues, we've asked LAWA to weigh in on what other options and opportunities there might be. They came to the committee, they wrote a report, and quite frankly, from my perspective, it's the valley not getting its fair share of time and attention it deserves, particularly at the most important facility and city asset we've got in the San Fernando Valley. The report states that, according to the general manager there, that they will consider the idea of perhaps LAWA meeting out there, it says recommends that they meet out there no less than two times per year. When, they've been trying to do that all along, and oftentimes, it's only once a year. They have 24 meetings a year. There's no reason that they can't meet four times a year at a minimum. We've asked, the committee came out, by the way, TCT, in their request, asked LAWA that they do meet out there four times a year, that they schedule a quarterly and overall management report to the board by Van Nuys Airport Manager, including efforts to improve stakeholder communications. They've also requested some various other things with outreach to the Citizens Advisory Council, as well as VICA and other organizations and neighborhood councils, et cetera. And so there's been no response officially yet from the request, while this council can vote on the recommendations, it can go back to LAWA, because it's a proprietary department, they don't have to do those things. And in fact, haven't yet acknowledged the report from the committee. And I know we have a representative from LAWA here. If you want to come speak to these things, I think it's critically important, Mr. Adams, that we can put these on the table and find out what LAWA's position is on what their position has been or taken to date based on the recommendations from committee prior to us voting on it.
Right. Mark Adams, Los Angeles World Airport. The motion was basically a request to figure out ways to improve communications between our board and the stakeholders of the airport, whether it be the residential community or the business community or what have you. Our report back in April of last year recommended all of the items that you've pointed out the committee recommended, except the committee did request additional, they changed their recommendation to request additional meetings in the valley. And we will, you know, once the council approves the committee recommendations, we're happy to take that to our board and get their feedback on that meeting schedule, and we'll be happy to implement all the other recommendations that we've made in that report.
So colleagues, I think it's appropriate that we hold this on the desk here for 30 days and wait for LAWA to take a position on the committee recommendations, so they can come back here with a real answer, instead of what we've been getting all these years about, we'll take the recommendations, we'll make the considerations, it's not up to us, the board's got to vote, it's a proprietary department. And while the San Fernando Valley, particularly those at the airport and that community, doesn't get those answers, so I would recommend that we hold it here for 30 days, that we bring it back after the Airport Commission has had the opportunity to take up the recommendations from the committee, and then look at what they've come out with formally.
Well, listen, Mr. Englander, Mr. Rosendahl has some things to say at this time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I totally agree with you, Mitch. It's a no-brainer for us to get those answers. The fact that the board must meet there, this is part of a regionalism that LAWA is a part of, and also your other motion about keeping jobs there and so on and so forth. I know you know Wayne Williams, who's one of the citizens' group's leadership people there, they're strongly with you on this, so I'll second your motion to have them come back in 30 days and give us more real information and understanding so we can go forward with making it work properly. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your leadership.
There's no other speakers on the queue. What I'd like to do with the two speakers, I'll take this back to committee. Is there any rush on this, Mr. Adams? Is there any rush on this?
I'd be happy to report back as soon as the council and committee want us to.
Yeah, so let me take it back to my committee and set it holding for the council. Let's have a discussion. Maybe we'll go out to the Van Nuys Airport or somewhere.
Great.
We'll have a discussion. I owe you a trip. Let's do that. Let's get a thorough analysis. I think the airport does a tremendous job, but all of us could do a better job. I think that's what Mitch is saying.
Exactly. Great, 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 great.
Madam Clerk, can we send this back to the Trade and Commerce Committee? Or Mr. Englander?
Appreciate your leadership on this, as well as being the chair of the committee and taking it out to value, I think it's a great idea. The one I want to see is that this isn't held up, because when we had the conversation prior to this coming up here this morning, the answer was, well, we're going to get some new board members possibly, because we'll have a new, you know, mayor in July, and so why don't we just see what happens? The valley's been waiting for a long time to see what happens. I think we should need to move this thing forward on a priority base.
Well, okay, I'll just, if you take back what you said, it's the most important public infrastructure, because I think the aqueduct's more important, and certainly the Tillman Water Recreation Plan is more important.
As an economic engine with providing jobs.
All right, okay, I'll get you there. You got me there, Mitch.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. So, Mr. City Attorney? We're going to, we're going to just, I know, you're requesting we hold it in here for a month?
No, I'm just saying that the council president, the council could refer it to the committee without objection.
So we're going to do it without objection, but to get it right back here. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal and Mr. Englander. Next item.
Item 20, item 30, called special by Councilmember Coretts.
Mr. Coretts?
Yes, actually, it would help to have Rec and Parks staff here.
And Ms. Adams, you're summoned. We just got Regina Adams, the fine Deputy General Manager for Recreation and Parks, the executive officer for the Recreation and Parks Department, which is a semi-autonomous commission that benefits from the 1925 charter so established.
So if she's prepared to answer questions, we could do it now. If she would rather have it delayed till Friday, that would also be a possibility.
Well, you sit at the table and give us an update. And if you need, Mr. Scholl or someone from your staff. Readdress the question, please, Mr. Coretts.
Okay, well, I have a few questions and a lot of concern about this item. I think it's a case of unnecessary outsourcing for the city, and I voted no against this item in committee and would request a no vote today unless we hear things that might lead us to think otherwise. We have Rec and Parks staff that handle maintenance in parks, including trails. We have street services and sanitation that could do this work, but instead, we're considering outsourcing bike trail maintenance to an outside contractor without a clear reason to do it. My question for Rec and Parks is, we have significant resources that we're giving this contractor, did Rec and Parks ever get the same level of resources to do the same work?
Regina Adams, Executive Officer, Recreation and Parks. And I apologize, council member, I have not seen this report that's before you today. However, a few months ago, we did have a meeting with Department of Transportation regarding, they did approach us about adding additional bike paths to the service that we already provide for them. And when we discussed with them about what the cost would be and underwritten limited resources that we had, they determined that they thought it would probably be better for them to probably go toward contracting out versus trying to avail of our services. The issue that we're facing is that for our staff, even though we try to provide resources to other things that are not recreational and parks-owned, we are having a difficulty with doing that because we have a limited amount of staff and we're not able to be able to hire staff to be able to do the additional work. We're at the point now where it's becoming very difficult for us to be able to handle the work, not only for ourselves, but even for others that are approaching us. This is an issue that we've discussed with other departments. And one of the things, of course, we know that we are not able to go out and hire people, whether it's full-time or part-time. And even if we hire part-timers, we have to be very careful about how many hours we have them available so that we limit having these employees becoming benefited employees, which then incurs additional costs for the city. So we're trying to balance what we have, our resources, and what we're able to use our folks for. As you know, in order for us to provide these additional services, we have to be able to charge other entities the full burdened cost of what it is for us to provide the service, which is the full and indirect cost. So when we did have this meeting with DOT, we brought that up to them, and they determined that they didn't think they would be able to afford what the additional cost would be. I haven't seen the report today, I apologize, but if you can give me until Friday, I can go back and look at the report and then have a better understanding of what's before you today.
I'm happy to wait until Friday, but...
Let's wait till the week from today instead of Friday.
But let me give them the one question to ponder, which is, what would stop us from giving you the resources and saying, hire the people that you can with this amount of money and go do the job? I think the problem is that we're asking you to do this work without the additional resources and make it more of a drain on an already embattled department. But if we gave you the funding that we're going to give to this contractor, who will go out and hire people and said, you do it instead, you hire the people that you need and do the job, I want to know that we couldn't do that, and I don't see a reason why we couldn't. So that's the question for Friday.
That's the question. Mr. Rosenthal, standing.
President, I feel like you did a sitting up there. I'm chair of the Transportation Committee, and I want to make some general comments and some statements, but thank you for being here. Hi. My first question is, are our bike paths being maintained by Rec and Park now?
Yes, we maintain approximately six at this point in time.
What are the frequency of cleaning when Rec and Park were doing the work?
What we do is we include the work for these bike paths in our routes that we do along with our parks.
And we have an obligation as a city to maintain those bike paths free of debris for the safety of the cyclists and pedestrians who travel those paths, correct?
Correct.
What's the term of the contract with shelter clean?
I haven't seen the contract, so I'm sorry.
You've not seen it. And not only are we expanding the number of bike paths we clean, but we're also increasing the frequency, correct?
I haven't seen what's in the contract.
And how many more paths, and what's the frequency of cleaning?
Can't answer.
Well, you see, obviously... So what we're going to do, but Ms. Adams was just leaving the John Farrow Chambers minutes ago, and when Mr. Coretts, Mr. Coretts mentioned Recreation of Parks, I spotted her, she would turn to the table. We're going to continue this a week so we don't have to get deep into it, but lay those questions out, and I'm sure we'll have a robust discussion.
And let me just say this in conclusion, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I believe we need to approve this now because the work isn't being done, and we owe the public that it is done. I'm happy to continue a discussion in my committee or whatever is best, but the interim, we should move forward with this contract, because we have issues there for cyclists right now. And I would like to move forward and then bring it to committee and deal with it like you just suggested.
Very good. Mr. Zine is the next on the queue, Mr. Zine from the 3rd District.
I'll wait till it comes back.
Wait till it comes back. Mr. Kokorian. Mr. Kokorian. So we're going to continue this a week, and please have representatives there, including the CAO's office and the Department of Transportation, which does our bikeways, as well as representatives of Recreation of Parks, and we'll do it. And Mr. Rosenthal, as chair of that, I agree with you, with no disrespect to anyone else, we got to get it done now because it's needed, as you know, in the beach cities and all those bikeways.
Cyclists and those pedestrians, we protect them, not just the multimodal car business.
You got it. Thank you so much. Ms. Adams, as always, thank you. We're going to continue this a week. Next item.
Item 28, called special by Councilmember Labons.
Yes, just to have the department at the center table, Zachie Mustafa, the top deputy for the Department of Transportation, and Pauline Chan, the outstanding engineer that does work on traffic calming. Give the members a brief briefing on this issue as we go before.
Good morning, council members. Zachie Mustafa, Executive Officer with Department of Transportation, and Pauline Chan, our senior transportation engineer. We're very excited to be acting proactively in introducing our new crosswalks to the city. It is a continental crosswalk. Basically, what it's doing is stopping the cars ahead of the crosswalk. It is a good way of preventing any accidents that may occur in the crosswalk. We have over 80 fatalities per year throughout the city, and this is a proactive approach on our department to make the more crosswalks more visible. Of course, it comes with cost, so in the future, we will be coming to you for additional funding for relocation of the loop detectors and the new crosswalks that we're installing. Pauline, would you like to...
Ms. Pauline, give us a brief on that too, for your fine work.
Yes, the new crosswalks we're talking about have very bold, wide stripes, similar to the ones that you already see at the uncontrolled locations. But the difference in the policy is that we would like to implement them throughout the city, even at locations where there are traffic signals. So instead of seeing the two plain lines, you will see wide bow stripes with a limit line in advance. This policy will be our first step in attacking the safety issues at our problem crash locations, and we intend to follow through with additional tools for our toolbox. This policy will also raise the level of pedestrianism in the city, raise the visibility of the pedestrians and their space.
We'll be working with Bureau of Street Services. As soon as the resurfacing project is done, all the crosswalks that you see out there will be converted to a continental crosswalk.
Very good, both of you. There's no speakers on the queue. I want to thank the Department of Transportation, your crews, and also both of you for the expert work that you do there. And we'll go forth with on this after the vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. And Mr. Chairman of the Transportation Committee, Mr. Rosenthal, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Zachie, come up here right now. Next item.
Item 37, called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh and Mr. Dude. Mr. Dude, call him Mr. Dude, he's not here. All right, Mr. Dude. Very good. Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh, you're out of time. Mr. Walsh, just say briefly what you want.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. We appreciate how well you're running the meeting, Chairman, and we are all in favor of our endorsements at HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Dude?
Yep, 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 removing them, huh? Those people did their job, but you're making it too hard for people to even have a place to live. You know, you got all this red tape going on, all these in-and-outs, all these escrow accounts, all these parking meters, all this. Give me, 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 and I'll give you back nothing. Ha!
Okay, thank you very much. No other speakers, no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes. Next item is called special by Mr. Weezer of the 14th District.
Item 39.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that we have good news on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, that we have moved to keep open some parks in the Skid Row area where they are definitely needed and used by many people there. And like many worthy projects in the city, San Julian Park was thrown into limbo by the dissolution of the CRA, and in January, the closure of the park was considered imminent, and we needed to keep this park open. Today, my office is offering additional funding as a lifeline for San Julian Park. This park serves hundreds of people every day in a neighborhood that is desperately lacking in grease space. I understand that the intensity to use of the park, and we have worked with local stakeholders to make this possible. Last year, Councilwoman Perry created bridge funding to keep the park operating, using savings from other homeless services. Those savings are gone now, but we will need to operate the park, and we will need a long-term resolution to funding and operational issues at San Julian. We are working to get that long-term solution, and I want to thank the nonprofit SRO Housing Corporation for its work and for its commitment to continue to operate this park. And today, we will keep it open and for many important activities that occur there. And I hope through this process, we will continue to find not only long-term funding for this park, but other parks in similar situations. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer, thank you for your leadership. We had three cards, but Mr. Walsh is out of time, and Mr. Dude is out of time. We'll note and file for the record your card. Yvonne Michelle, is Yvonne Michelle here? We'll note this as well. So there's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes. Next item.
Mr. President, just for the record, there's a request, Ms. Perry wishes to be registered as a no vote for item five. Since that does not change the outcome of the item, her vote will be changed to a no, which will bring the outcome to eight ayes and five noes.
Five noes, and we don't need to revote it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Next item. Next item.
Item 40, called special for cards.
Donna Paraman.
This is Donna here, and it looks like we're using a lot of money over here. We're transferring now $45,540 from AB 1290 funds again. Now, the biggest thing I wanted to know exactly is, it says this parking piece of Hollywood's Bowl is used at the Los Angeles Zoo parking lot. I don't exactly, I like to have the council describe how is it the Hollywood Bowl is near the Los Angeles Zoo? So, and how is the parking lot in the summer during the 2013 season going to help out the Hollywood Bowl? Because I really like the Hollywood Bowl. My boyfriend Steve Forstel's father used to play in the Hollywood Bowl, so it's the byline. So I'm just going to just say real quickly that I hope this is not a big waste of money like a used city council usually does. And why does Hollywood Bowl need the Los Angeles Zoo? I'm going to leave the rest of my time.
Thank you. Donna, this is a park-and-ride. You park at the zoo parking lot, which is not used at night, and you ride over. Where do you live, Donna?
In the valley.
You could take it, there's a park-and-ride in the valley. I'm sure Mr. Zine will find you the right location. Thank you so much. That's what this is about. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes. That completes the agenda. We have public comment, is that correct? With the exception of executive session.
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Dude, you're called forth. Mr. Walsh, you're next.
Well, I actually wrote a few things here. There is electoral apathy. I wonder why? You don't really listen to anybody, and you make your decisions in closed doors. And when somebody gets elected like George Bush, people are stupid. They don't go and say, we don't want George Bush. You see? And he rules the country, and then he says, what happened? How did he get elected? His brother helped him. Okay. Border apathy? Yeah, because we don't make the decisions. Some little idiots do. Development agency? African-Mexican founders? They didn't even talk about the real Mexicans, which are considered illegal aliens. Come on. The blacks and the Mexicans have to get it together so we can fight this stupid system we're living in. And let's see, oh, a little song came to my mind. Go ahead and kill your neighbor, go ahead and cheat your friend, you know? Do it in the name of heaven, you can justify it in the end. That's what we're doing. We are killing each other and justifying everything. Oh, alcohol license to those health stores. You know, how healthy is alcohol? Give them to Fresh &amp; Easy, give it to Trader Joe's, give it to all the health people. And then prohibit marijuana, which some people use as medicine. You see? It's a stupid way to go, every time.
John Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You just got your ballots in the mail. Go to our endorsements and go to our new, what we put up. We just put up a lot of new stuff on our front page. Okay, no on Prop A, but I want to say what no one else has said. And I want to say it to the state of Texas. And I want to say it to the state of Texas. You come in here, Governor Rick Perry, and buy ads on our TV stations telling us that we're a load of crap? Now, maybe there's not a man or a woman up here at city council that will stand up to you and your guns. I'm an Irish-American, an out-of-state Irish-American. I remember what you did to an Irish-out-of-state American a few years ago in Texas on November twenty-sixth, twenty-second, nineteen sixty-three.
Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh, Texas is far away from Los Angeles. Please address Los Angeles.
We're attacked on Los Angeles. See that? He's defending you. We are attacked by Los Angeles and the entire state of California. Now, if you don't have the guts to stand up to punk butt Perry, I do. And I want to say that I will challenge you to a three-round fight here at Staples Arena. Three rounds. Are you man enough to come to LA, punk butt Perry? And we'll have, we'll have Alakon be the referee, and I'll wipe you to clean. Because you don't attack Los Angeles, and now maybe the city council will defend you, but no Texan, no Texan in the world is going to attack the city of Los Angeles and come in here. Because if you go, and incidentally, I have been invited to Texas by the governor Perry. He's gonna give me a tour of the firing range and teach me how to pick up bullets. Come here, you punk butt. Come here, and I'll whip your butt, Hollywood Highlands.
Michael Carey on, Daniel Jones. Is Michael here? Note Michael's name for public comment, Daniel Jones.
Good morning. My name is Dan Jones. I try to know how you feel. If anybody's noticed, I haven't been here on Tuesdays for, what, eight weeks? It's called setting the table. I knew something like this would be coming down here. Y'all gonna have to learn that before you pass an equity bill of thirty-two point five million dollars, you're gonna have to wait till at least use the bathroom. Okay, y'all are making a good reason why you shouldn't be mayor or candidates. Thank you. Nonprofit. They make profit. It's kind of, well, cardinal rule number one of a city entity to create a nonprofit, it dilutes thirty-two point five million dollars from everything else that people Gladys Park, my suggestion. Why don't you build a CCEA? They do business down there, and let them pay for the Gladys Park. Stingray, city attorney? Anybody else in this room want to keep using their cellphone? What's to stop the city police department, Mr. Alakon? No, 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 no. What's to stop the city police department from listening to legal conversations between two business partners? And they discuss a big conversation? What's to stop the police department from going down and selling that information to their competitor? What's to stop the police department from robbing grandma on the way home after she says, "Hello, Frank, I'm on the cellphone. Wait till I get back, I'm on the cellphone. Wait till I get back from the bank." Right? Because the justification that the mayor or the police department said to use that cellphone technology with illegal equipment without a court order? You can't use it in court. So the justification's a false positive. So they're gonna data mine your neighborhoods, and they're not gonna keep it in the poor people, they're gonna keep it in the rich people's neighborhood. Why? Because they got all the valuable information, right? Stingray?
Donna Perriman, followed by Patrick Duff. Is Patrick Duff still here? You're after Donna. Sir, your time is complete. Please vacate the area. You're disrupting the meeting. Walk 'em out, Sergeant. Disrupting the meeting.
Okay.
On purpose, note that, Mr. City Attorney. Note that in big letters.
Okay, this is Donna. I'd like to, first of all, thank Councilman Rosenthal, you've been really caring, and in terms of Marion, you know, thank you very much. Anyway, I just put a little humor on after John Walsh, since it's really big, I wanted to say. Eric Garcetti is so pretty. A vote for him will save our city. He's third in the books, so have a look. Anyway, Garrett Garcetti for mayor shows he knows how to lead. He acted as mayor and was a great president of the city council. So he knows how to lead, so he knows how to lead us in the right direction. So let's vote for Eric Garcetti. Anyway, Marion will be back soon, and I came back because I want to tell them to reopen video conferencing in Van Nuys. It's not enough to just every other, every other month on a Friday, because some people have to work that day. All candidates say, hey, they care for the valley, yet the voice of the San Fernando Valley is very quiet. City councils should show that it cares about the constituents in Los Angeles County, which includes the valley, and reopen it before we get a mayor. I like Councilman Garcetti for mayor because he will find the video conferencing funding, he will fund it, the video conferencing in Van Nuys. And I hope we will have a lot more participation in Van Nuys, and people in the valley will be encouraged to go to City Hall in Van Nuys to speak. In the meantime, they keep on coming with all sorts of projects for Measure R and Proposition C. It will soon balloon into an enormous size. Trust me, they will ask for more. They will need more money for the rail projects. We need to get money smart. Get those who owe us, go after fraud and abuse, money not well-spent, and stop getting off the backs of the city employees. We need to be really smart in terms of running this and not just coming up with more taxes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Duff.
Good afternoon now, not any morning anymore. You know, this morning, on my way into city council, I figured, you know, hey, I'm coming to city council, I feel good, I want to voice my opinions. So I said to the person at the front, I said, "Listen, I'd like to go to city council, and I'm enacting the Brown Act." And the person looked at me like I had three heads. And they made me show an ID to get in here today. So there was the first time my rights were stripped from me this morning, which I appreciate. That's something I enjoy in the city of LA. And then I watched Mr. Trutanich, when you say, "Okay, we're gonna call item number five," him walk up here to the public comment booth, make public comments, then you tabled the item, and then you took no more public comments. Well, I don't think that's fair. I was here since nine o'clock in the morning, he walked in, ten minutes later, bang, right out. Now, it is what it is, he's the elected official, I understand that. But if you read the ordinance, actually read it, don't just vote on it, read it. It says in the ordinance that managers and employees need background checks. It doesn't say the owner needs it, it doesn't say the board members need it. Okay? It's gonna limit the number of dispensaries, let's say, to a hundred. We have about a thousand now. Let's say every dispensary does somewhere around twenty to thirty patients a day. That's twenty to thirty thousand people a day that get their medicine. If you limit it to a hundred places, you're talking about two hundred to three hundred patients a day at each one of those. So the neighborhoods are gonna be pissed off to no, no end, because the parking spaces are gonna be taken, the local businesses next to them, their parking spaces are gonna be taken. Okay, Mr. Zine is talking about seeing vacancy signs. You want to make seven hundred fresh vacancy signs? That's the ordinance that you put together. That's seven hundred places that are not gonna get rent. That's about three to four thousand people that will be out of work. If you want to support business, allow the free market to decide what we need as a people. Allow us to decide. Don't legislate what business needs to do itself. The free market will decide.
Thank you. George Azarian. George. Alex Smith.
Speaking to the mic, George. Sargent's helping. Until today. I am ninety years old now. Too hard for me. Two thousand eight hundred people, every month I give food, low-income people. I wanted now, I am ninety years old, I wanted some little place gonna put my trailer, couple trailer, and gonna give food to low-income people. Because from Montebello, all Los Angeles area streets, street I give, too hard, gasoline is high, too hard for me. I wanted little place, too close freeway. City no need. If you need, twenty-four hour gonna vacate. And then twenty new job gonna be. Lot of good for city. That's why I work, and I no work for money, I work for city. I am LA best. I support after-school program. I need the help. I have to do. Now, I no have place. Before, I got a city give me six or seven North Vermont, two-floor building, but now can't pay off. That's why I, little place I run, too close, too close freeway. No construction nor nothing, no lights, no water, no restroom, no nothing, I no need. I need only place for parking van, couple van, trucks.
Thank you. Thank you. Alex Smith, followed by Bobby Cooper.
Good afternoon. My name is Alexander Smith, and I'm a homeless person. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Mac Foundation in regards to them requesting the permits or the assistance of this council for them to obtain a license to have a Section Eight building, which where they will provide furniture, food, and clothing to whoever gets accepted into this program. Also, what he was talking about is he's also requesting of the city council of an empty lot near the wanted freeway done by Vermont off Oakwood, which he would like to store some trailers in, place some trailers on that would house his food for him to give food out to the low-income people, you know? And being a homeless person, I do, took the time and courage to come up here and speak to you guys, even though I'm a little nervous. But anyway, thank you.
You did an excellent job, Mr. Smith. Bobby Cooper, followed by Yvonne Michelle Altrie.
Yes, my name is Bobby Cooper. As you know, I've been up here several times in the past. Right now, I'm here today to try to get back into my office, your police officers. Whoever owns that building that I'm in filed lawsuits against me with regards to unlawful detainees, you know? Now, I informed the courts that those documents, they informed me, were erroneous, they were rejected and returned. I still can't get in my office because of Los Angeles Police Department. Why is that? My bank accounts, I can't get in there. When I went to check on my bank accounts at Bank of America, they called the police. I got eight police showing up on my account telling me that I'm trespassing. I got over a million dollars in the bank, and I'm supposed to be trespassing, Bank of America? Look, the case number is case number twelve U-oh-nine-oh-one-six to keep me out of my office. It's been rejected by the court. I'd like to get in the office. I'd like to, my, your police officer, to cease from harassing me. Okay, I'm here today in order to add some more information. This is regarding to telecommunications fraud, how they got your money. Jesse Costello worked for AT&amp;T right here in Los Angeles. Thomas Mullitz works for Times Warner out of Riverside County. Violation of First and Fifteenth Amendment with regards to you people involuntary servitude. You're gonna use me to work, take my money, and profit by my work. That's not right, and it's wrong. I intend to rectify that. We, my father and I, Jesus Christ, because he's given me enough money to contribute fifty thousand dollars to the new mayor campaign. Well, that's about eight minutes. Look, these are the credit cards that they're into. You know, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a pop, you know, school grants, all that stolen, right here in Los Angeles, Riverside County. You got more than seventy police officers.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Altrie, please come forward.
Yes, first, I wanted to state that I'm hoping that Councilman Rosenthal is healed or praying for you. I had no idea, I hadn't been here for a year, and we're just praying for immediate recovery as quickly as possible. So glad to see that you're still present on the city council. And again, I'd like to thank Mr. Garcetti for taking the time to field questions to the most, maybe the most exploited and indigent Skid Row residents approximately two months ago, when we did invite him to a city town hall meeting at the James Woods Center. Again, both Ms. Grula and Ms. Perry declined the invitation that was given and offered by Los Angeles Community Action Network. So I would encourage all of those within my earshot to support Eric Garcetti for mayor because he has the interests of the most indigent at heart, and not just those who are financing campaigns or what have you. And what I'd like to state right now is with regard to the parks, of course, I said it last week, that CA and AA meetings, as well as Para los Niños, need, or they use the Gladys Park on a regular basis. Now, the parks are a basis of community organizing, involvement, participation, notwithstanding the circulation of drugs, which we are working on discouraging. Again, if you do your part to discourage the illegal circulation that the police are involved in, then hopefully, community organizations can step up and discourage self-medication. This is the largest recovery area of the nation, I believe. So again, we need to keep the parks open. I know you found funding not just for six months because the basis of civilizational community. And if you just opened a park across the street, I mean, what's the deal? You can do it here, but not over there? Okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Ms., Madam Clerk, I think the only thing left on the agenda is our closed session item. So if we could please clear the council chambers, if everyone would please exit the council chambers at this time.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over 16,000 acres of parkland with parks and lakes.
Sergeants, we're good? All right. Madam Clerk, what business is still before this body?
Mr. President, just a clarification for item, or actually correction for item number four. It was continued to July 5th. July 5th is council recess, so the next meeting date would be July 23rd. So that item four, continue to July 23rd.
Okay, without objection.
Council has motions for posted and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Announcements? Could everybody please rise for adjourned motions? Please rise for adjourned motions. Joy B., did I see you raise your hand? Mr. Bustagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of William Bill Horst. Bill was born on May 2nd, 1937, in Butler, Oklahoma. Passed away January 27th of this year in Harbor City at the age of 75. Bill dedicated his life to the community of Harbor Gateway. Along with his late wife, Rita, Bill founded the Harbor Gateway Torrance Outreach, a food bank for low-income families. Bill was a veteran of the Army National Guard and had the privilege to play the trombone for President John F. Kennedy. Bill worked for Dow Chemical for 35 years and, following his retirement, volunteered with the Los Angeles Police Department. I had the opportunity to work with Bill on a number of quiet life issues, Community Police Advisory Board, among others. Later, Bill earned a master's in gerontology, along with many other awards and grants. Bill was a member of the Phi Kappa Phi and was very proud of his accomplishment. In his spare time, Bill enjoyed collecting picture postcards, musical instruments, Hot Wheels, and Disney pins. Bill had a huge heart and loved his animals. He will greatly miss them. He is survived by his children Janet, John, Brenna, Nancy, and Randy; two stepdaughters, Darlene and Jamie; three brothers, Henry, Orin, and Carl, Gene; four sisters, Iona, Iola, Imogene, and Nema; numerous grandchildren, great-grandchildren, nephews, nieces, and countless friends. His services were held yesterday at First Lutheran Church in Torrance. In lieu of flowers, please send donations to the Harbor Gateway Torrance Outreach Food Bank. May Bill rest in peace. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Parks?
Thank you. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Ralph Edward Anderson, who was born May 1959 in San Francisco and passed away in Los Angeles, January 2013. Ralph was raised in Southern California, along with his two sisters Cheryl and Carol. He graduated from Locke High. After high school, he continued his education at LA Southwest Community College and pursued his love of football. While living in Los Angeles, he established a great number of long-lasting friendships with his high school friends and family. He is extremely intelligent, enjoyed the simple pleasures of life, such as reading the daily newspaper, watching TV, and eating all of his favorite food. Among his many jobs, he most enjoyed his career as a senior gardener for the city of Los Angeles Department of Wrenken Park, where he worked for 11 years prior to his early retirement. He also, he always worked to not only provide for his entire family, but also all of their wants and needs. On March 21st, 1992, he married Chantel Sharter after a long courtship. Their union created a blended family. Ralph was survived by his wife of 21 years, Chantel, and a host of family members. Funeral services have not been held.
Mr. Laban.
I remember there was a tragedy in Irvine, California. Two young people were victims of crime and murdered, Michelle Kwan and her fiancee Keith Lawrence. I ask we adjourn in their memory, their young lives. Keith was a security officer, a police officer for the University of Southern California, well-respected. Monica Kwan was a great basketball coach in the college level. They're both survived by family and friends. Monica's dad is Randall Kwan, a classmate of mine at John Marshall High and at King Junior High in Ivanhoe. He also is a retired Los Angeles police captain. I urge we adjourn in memory of Monica Kwan and Keith Lawrence. In addition, on a greater note, a 95-year-old fellow named Jack Singer, who came to Los Angeles, came to Hollywood, bought the Hollywood Center Theater up there off of Santa Monica Boulevard, lived a wonderful life, had the revitalization of that area, started the Business Improvement District. Just last year, we honored him with a resolution. He died just the other day in Calgary. A wonderful man, Jack Singer, a full life. And lastly, Mr. President, I ask we adjourn in memory of Barbara Louise Walters, on behalf of Mr. Garcetti. She was married for over 50 years to retired LAPD Sergeant and CAO Analyst Jean Walters, and a mother to our very own Brian Walters, who was our city clerk in the chamber for many years here. Barbara was born in Pittsburgh, came to California, and met Jean, who just became a Los Angeles police officer. She loved watching Channel 35. She loved watching the civic affairs. She was very involved after the 1994 earthquake in helping community, and she will be sorely missed. I ask we adjourn in memory of Barbara Louise Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon.
I'll do a formal adjournment tomorrow, but I just heard about an hour ago, a longtime community activist in Silmar, Jeannie Rowe, passed away after a long illness. And she's connected with so many different organizations, as I'll explain tomorrow. But just for the purposes of announcement, the people of Silmar have lost longtime community activist Jeannie Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Madam Clerk, before we adjourn, we need to send forth with items five and 38, also items 20, 21, and 23. So has that been duly noted? Mr. Laban?
Thirty-two and 33.
Thirty-two and 33 as well. Okay, with that said, there's no more business before this council. We are adjourned.